Like the quarter of cost order health and recreation, we have two items on the agenda. The first item is a discussion of Groull Park. Mr. Rigging?
I sent everybody an email with like...
Yep, to you too.
I guess what's going on with at least one neighbor, he said there's more than that. They live on the other side of Hamburg Street. There's a lot of loud music goes on from the cricket games they play there at weekends. And the video I sent was clearly it was after dark too when it was on. So I know the police have been called and notified. But Chief Clifford mentioned to me in a message that he was wondering if we could do anything with regulations, but I don't know what else we can do. I don't know how the contract states, the contract states. I know Jeremy was just in charge of that. I don't know how that went. But they have a legitimate complaint because that was pretty loud if you listen to the video. It was pretty loud. That person that sent it to me lives on the other side of Hamburg Street, not on the Groull Park side across the street. So it's an issue, you know. He said this thing is happening all summer that way. So it's disturbing to them that there's complaints.
Well, right now, there's not a contract. They don't have, we had a contract before, but now it's not contracted city. They come and pull their permits and play, and that's how it works. The city's in charge of that now. So they don't have a contract with the city like we used to have with Seaplane.
Do you know if the permits, when they get the permits, are they told that should be in there, can't be in there after dusk? And as far as the noise ordinance, should that be added in there? That there's a noise ordinance?
I know that all parks, well, not all parks, but most of the parks in there, that was supposed to be after dusk. But I don't know about the noise ordinance. I can make a note now. I don't understand that question.
Chief and I reviewed those. There were actually four days where there were calls there. The police responded, advised, was one time a ticket was issued. So again, I don't know whether it's dusk or sometimes during the summer at nine o'clock closing time. But it's something that we ought to be able to handle.
Well, probably in the summer, it's close to dusk anyhow. When this, this was from late October, I think October 22nd. It was clearly dusk. You know, you could see that in the video. It was clearly dusk. And that's why we revised that dusk occurred years ago because of that. Because we had mild winter, I remember like two or three years. But we don't want it after dusk. So any suggestions on what we do? Just let them know when they get the permits that there's issues or...
Well, I'm not sure how it works with, so confused with Jeff Mayor.
It's either have the permit modified or to have the wording or clearly delineate the per. Or again, if there are issues, then people make the call to the police department. The department is responding and what reaction we take depending what these may be.
All right, we'll just maybe ask the entity in there that the police will be calling if there's any...
I just ask the chief a question. You mentioned to me about if we could do something with requirements to make it easier for you guys to do your jobs or anything behind?
Well, if there ever happens an event where they plan on wanting to park for certain number of hours, it's supposed to be put on notice so that...
So please know what the hours are?
Just be ready to show up. You know, I'm almost thinking something along the lines of like the park has to control the patients. Whether it's the department that knows about it or some other authority that knows about it, that to maintain it properly.
Are you aware of the verbiage that are under permits? Does a copy go to the police department? So it's on file?
Yes.
We'll modify the language on that, the permits. I assume they're done for the year? I don't know. Are they done, John? Do you know anything about that?
Their schedule said they're done, but the weather's been holding out. So I'm not sure that that means they don't then come pull the permits, use the park. The schedule has run out though. No, scheduled events. Any other questions about this? Okay. Our next item on the agenda, the Recreation Advisory Commission will come and they have a report and are asking actually to modify for approval of their proposal for the Rose Garden steps and the greenhouse, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you for allowing me to have the opportunity to talk with you tonight. Just want to kind of give you a report of where we are with $250,000 that Mayor and this council has provided for us in this year's budget. We have a couple of proposals in front of you tonight that we'd like to talk about. I'd like to invite Mary Moore Wallinger up with me to discuss this. The first one that we're talking about is renovations to the Rose Garden steps. As you know, this year's money is earmarked specifically for Central Park. And we thought, along with the playground equipment that would be going in there, it would be no better to get these steps done. It's been a safety issue there. And Mary Moore has put together a very nice presentation. And it comes to about $97,770.50, I think is the exact number.
We got the 50 cents.
And I'll turn it over to Mary to let her discuss exactly some specifics that we'll be doing there.
So I'm sure most of you are familiar with the steps in the Rose Garden. They're really, really rough shape. All the people visiting the Rose Garden and also using the disc golf, which is great in Central Park, there's a fair amount of people wanting to go up and down those stairs. And the, from the, for the Rose Garden, it's nice because it offers a really beautiful view. One of the few places you can kind of get up high and really appreciate the layout of the Rose Garden and see the town and then over the pergola. There, the stairs were rumored to have been built by WPA, but I believe it was a precursor to the W. My husband, picky historian, has assured me that it was a precursor to the WPA. But they, there's an image of them that I put a small piece of it on the cover of the proposal that you can also see on the kiosk near the garden. And they actually used to have pretty elaborate stone cheek walls. It's very different than what you see today. So the intent would be to try to replace them in the spirit of the Rose Garden that we have there now, but not necessarily in the exact form that they were before. The cheek walls, I think for security reasons, you wouldn't want them to be that high. You'd want them to be just sort of low to the ground. Having them will provide more structural stability for the stairs. And so the new design would have a low cheek wall on the side, and then you would have the stone steps in between with a stone veneer on them. And so they would have a footing that would go to frost so they would be durable, stay in place. They would include handrails on both sides that would make it a lot safer. We'd make sure that any of the new grades would be to the proper codes so the landing would make it to 2%. And it would be just a much safer situation than what we have there now. Instead of, right now, the original design included three different tiers of steps. And looking at the way the garden is used and maintained, this would look to switch to doing four tiers of steps. So it's not such a long run in between. And also, there's a viewing terrace that a lot of people like to access where there's a bench right now, but actually you step off of these steps to get onto. So what we'd like to do is change it so there's a landing there so that when people are maintaining the Rose Garden or when people are going up to look at the garden and sit and reflect that they can safely get back and forth. So that was one modification to the design. And so the proposal that would, is to submit a proposal to do the design for the steps, which would include the, I've worked with NJ Engineering, does a lot of work for the city. They would do structural engineering to make sure that everything is sound. It also includes a cost in there for doing some test pit excavations. So we would have QCQA, who's also done a lot of work in the city, come just do a couple drawings, which will tell us exactly what the soil conditions are, which would mean that we might be able to save some costs on the structural design because we may not have to go as thick or quite as deep based on what the soil conditions are. But if you don't know what those are, you have to kind of design worst case scenario in mind. So that would allow us to tailor the design to be the most cost effective and structurally sound. And so then, once the drawings were done, the project would be put out to bid. And this is, I put in an estimate of costs. Try to be fairly conservative just because smaller projects tend to be a little bit higher. So that's, that's, it does follow, that was one of the items that was part of the Rose Garden, some part of Rose Garden master plan, just of there, the stairs. One of the other things we did talk about was because the stairs don't go all the way over the hill, and that would be quite a lot more stair. And doesn't feel like there's not really, there's not a big trail up there. One of the ideas was to create a little bit of a platform at the top, another bench. So the idea is you could go up a bench that would look down on the garden, but you would certainly still be able to, the landing would not be obstructed and still be able to go that way if you were playing disc golf and wanted to come to and from the garden. So it wouldn't, wouldn't compromise anybody's ability to go up and down the stairs, but it would just create sort of a natural terrace to the stairs so it would look like randomly stopped in the middle of the hill.
Question? So at this time, you're asking, I'm sorry, Ms. Brazza.
I just have a question on the bidding process and how that coordinates the city bidding process. I assume it would go out through your office?
Mr. Spexley completed and anyone that, and yes, we put out the bids.
So Rich, tonight, you're asking us to approve for the, actually for the design piece of this?
Yep.
For the $97,700.50?
Or no, sorry, the design piece of this is...
15, right?
Yes.
Okay. All right, the whole scope is 97, so...
The whole scope is 97. The design piece with the test drawings, the structural engineering design is $50,500.
You want us to, you're looking for approval for the entire thing, but knowing that we have to go out to bid?
Correct.
For the structural?
Well, the bids would come back to you for approval separately whenever they come in.
But aren't we, we need to approve the funding for it? Is that what you're asking?
I don't think so.
The monies are there.
Yes.
This is 17 money then?
Yes.
Still in 17 money?
Right.
Yes.
It would be a two-step process. We would do this tonight, and then we would approve a bid when, after we went to bid.
Other other questions?
This is for the stairs?
Or the design?
For the design?
The design or the actual work to rebuild it?
Just the design.
The design tonight?
I think what you're asking is for, to approve that for the design and then for general sense of approval for allotting roughly that amount of construction.
Right.
So the design could definitely fall under the professional services exemption to the competitive bidding law. But for the work itself, once the design is done, that would...
Back then, it has to be...
So what's your exact amount for the design?
I believe it's $15,500.
50 cents?
We got that covered.
Yeah, $15,500.
So if there's no other questions, our entertainment agency should approve that?
So move. I'll just handle that first.
You'll handle that? We don't need to approve it?
Correct.
Okay. Well, we don't need to do that.
And then we have a couple other questions?
Yes. Okay.
Jesse, stop. About the greenhouse, yep. Yep. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
And the second thing that we're going to talk about, invite Janet Chan, who's a member of our Recreation Advisory Commission, to come up with me. We have about $11,895 for greenhouse improvements. And Janet is here as representative from, not only from our Recreation Advisory Commission, but from Friends of the Greenhouse.
Yes, a master gardener too. So we noticed in this, well, the greenhouse, ever since Friends of the Greenhouse was formed, we've been able to do a lot of improvements. We've got the engines, the motors going, we've replaced glass. It's actually fully functional now. So we have a classroom, and we had plans drawn up for the classroom to do some improvements to that because there was like rotting wood underneath in the sill, doors that weren't working properly. So this was like a structured kind of one thing after another kind of program. So one of the things that we looked at was a handicap accessible bathroom. There's an existing bathroom, but it's really funky, and you wouldn't be able to get somebody in a wheelchair in there. And as it turns out, in the spring, we had some ladies who came from the Annie Schaper home for our spring plant sale. And one of them was an amputee, and she was in a wheelchair, and she asked if there was a bathroom she could use, and there wasn't. So she had to wait until the bus came back. And then the other thing is, this past year, Cornell Cooperative Extension partnered with ARC and the Community College to offer a horticulture certificate program for individuals with disabilities. And we plan to offer it again beginning February of 2018. So it's important that we have accommodations for people so we can offer programs to all individuals. As it stands now, anyone in a wheelchair, we really can't accommodate them. So what we'd like to do is have a ramp added to the classroom and have the existing bathroom modified to make it handicap accessible. So we had a quote from Legere for that, and that's where we got these numbers from. So that would be for the bathroom itself, $4,169.23. For the ramp with railings, that would be $6,346.44. And then we were hoping to get handicap accessible picnic tables as well. And I found some online that were like $457 apiece. So three of those tables, they're 46 inches square, and there's an ADA, you know, there's a spot there for a wheelchair. So three of those tables would come to $1,379.85 for a total of $11,895.52. And we'd be able to expand our program to accommodate people with disabilities.
Ms. Brazza?
So this also mentions, excuse me, mentions raised beds? Did you...
Well, what happened was, yeah, because the cooperative extension actually cut checks to the raised beds.
Okay.
So we have the raised beds, and I thought instead of the raised beds, we could get the handicap accessible tables.
Mr. Kosher?
So a few points. The handicap accessible picnic, I would assume we can do those in-house because we've done those for the park. Reggie, they've done quite a few of them in Central Park that they put in, and they are wheelchair accessible. So that would save us an enormous amount of money of what you have here.
$1,300.
That's a lot of money. Yeah, I'm sure they don't cost $400 apiece when we do them in-house. Does this have to go out to bid as well, Carl? How does this work? Or Mr. Mayor, does this have to go out to bid, or are we able to accept these bids for the bathroom cost? Does this...
We have to canvass three vendors.
Right.
What's the criteria on this?
Yeah, we need at least three responsible vendors.
So what's the cost going to be for the work in the bathroom approximately? What was the quote?
$4,100.
$4,169.
And the ramp is $6,300. So you've got almost 11, well, 10, 5 there.
So that wouldn't meet the threshold where you have to do a formal bid. We follow our local permit policy, you can get three quotes.
And Chris, I see you're here. How close are the new bathrooms that we're putting at the tennis court in relationship to the greenhouse? At the end, at same fence perimeter? And would we be able to provide a gate there to utilize those brand-new bathrooms that we're putting in?
Probably 15 yards.
Because they're brand-new. Some of the programs are going to be in February. So I mean, if you have somebody in a classroom...
And you have heat in that place? You have heat in that place?
Yeah. But then you have to, you know, chalk them outside.
I understand that. I didn't realize you're there in the wintertime either.
Yeah.
Because that was going to be my next question. Are we winterizing the greenhouse? So we don't have the catastrophe that we had a few years ago. Everything froze. Well, that's where everything froze, and everything came down, remember?
Yeah. But this is the classroom. So in terms of the greenhouse, that's in the near future.
Yeah.
Greenhouse, we have...
So it's going to be open all year round?
The classroom. Yeah. The greenhouse, we have volunteers who'll go there. There's more than four inches of snow. We have a volunteer group that volunteers different weekends, and we go and we turn the heat on so that the snow melts, and then we go back and turn it off until we're able to winterize it completely or utilize it year-round. So it's just for the classroom.
So Mr. Kosher, are you suggesting that we wait to see if the city can do the picnic table?
Well, it's your own piece. I didn't know we can do. I know we can do that. But other than that, I mean, I'm certainly in support of the entire project. I've got no problem with that. That building's been underutilized for many years, and as I said, I didn't realize we used it in the winter. Because we used to use it for our summer camp as well. Used to go there and used to have programs and master microscope with kids. Have good stuff. Yeah, so very good. As long as we have the money, I'm assuming.
What's...
I was going to say, they're a lot of trouble.
So what I would suggest though is that we have to find out if we can do the picnic tables in-house, and if not, then prove to go ahead and spend the rest.
Okay. We have to go, we have to get three quotes anyway.
Three, well, three vendors.
If we just approve the process of, we don't even, I don't even think we have to do that, right? We just have to get the vendors because it's uncertain.
Right.
So we can still move forward with it.
The picnic tables, we can do in-house, really becomes just a question of timing, getting the schedule of the project. Still look at what the price for a vendor is available, what it would cost us to do it in-house and...
Good labor and everything else.
So I guess we don't have to do anything.
Yep. Okay. All right.
Very good.
Thank you.
Evening.
Okay, it's Mr. Brazza for Health and Recreation. Not entertain a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All of them favor?
Aye.
We adjourn.
And I apologize if I overlooked the Sura meeting, so a break in the agenda to do the Sura meeting. My apologies.
It's a lengthy meeting, but I think we can persevere.
You're on the clock.
I don't have the agenda for Sura.
I don't either. Nobody has the agenda.
I got it. Can you mail it out? Last week, hopefully you all got it.
No.
You're welcome.
She didn't get it.
Oh, my God. Oh, okay, it's done, yeah. I need a real towel. Yep.
I do a call to order?
Uh, no, I think the mayor did that. Okay.
Call to order, the Schenectady Urban Renewal Agency. First item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from our May 1 meeting.
So move.
And do we have the minutes?
We got it.
Yes, they were emailed. I followed it. Is that normally in the packet?
All in favor of accepting the minutes? Signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Then it stands adopted. Next item, the adoption of the 2018 budget. Entertain a motion to approve it? Second?
So move.
Any discussion, analysis, review, modifications? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Budget stands adopted. Next item, resolution 2017-8, which is a transfer of a series of properties from Sura to the city of Schenectady. Entertain a motion?
So move.
By Mr. Palamini, second by Mr. Kosher. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution is adopted. Any other business come before the agency?
Motion to adjourn.
By Mr. Kosher, second by Mr. Palamini. All in favor?
Aye.
Agency stands in adjournment. Thank you.
Well done, sir.
Okay.
It's all Rachel.
Call to order, public safety. First item is discussion, towing contract. That is under your name?
Yes, I guess we have the, and Ms. Brazza as well, right? Do you want to...
When we were in our budget discussions, we talked about the fact that the revenue from the towing contract that we've been talking about for a number of years was being taken out of the budget, and we certainly wanted to see that RFP go out again so that we could actually adopt the resolution that we had put forth, so we put forth a number of years ago so that we could actually receive that revenue. And the impression was that the council hadn't put their recommendations forth, but I have since applied the recommendations that the council put forth in February to encourage the city to actually move forward with the RFP process so that we can get these contract signs and realize this projected $40,000 worth of revenue.
Staff is preparing a RFP, which will be available for review by the council in two weeks. Go out shortly after that.
Great.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Nope, we're good on that. Thank you.
Next item is a moratorium on the sale of tobacco products and a new convenience store. Charlie, what? Council Mayor asked me to look into whether there was a way that we could put a moratorium on allowing convenience stores, new convenience stores to sell tobacco. And having looked into that, I don't believe that we can, and that's because right now we don't have any city-level licensing or permitting of tobacco sales. We were able to do previous moratoriums on convenience stores, new convenience stores because we do have a license that you have to get for running a convenience store. But because we don't have anything like that tobacco, I don't believe that we could legally do a moratorium on the topic if we discussed it.
So what that means is if we want to cap the number of stores in the city that sell tobacco products, and if we want to put the thousand feet from a school in place while we grandfather in the existing stores, I would suggest that we put it on for two weeks and really come to the table with our ideas and get ready to move forward quickly because without the moratorium, the clock is ticking, right? We have no, we have no control over that. So that would be my recommendation. We just need to really move forward in an efficient manner in getting this done.
So Groull Park, we're going to follow up with that, or that's something we'd like to put together for this bet?
Well, Mr. Kosher and I met with Judy Wright Meyer, and she has a report of the existing number of stores at the city of Schenectady. So I think we just need to take a look at that.
You forwarded it to everybody, didn't you? We, I think we had, yes. Everybody has that.
Yep.
Okay. So it happens back for two weeks?
Right. But I would, I would really impress upon everyone that we need to come to the table prepared with recommendations so we can come to consensus and move in a forward direction and not continue to, you know, discuss it cycle after cycle after cycle if everybody's comfortable.
Right, get it done.
With. Come to agreement.
We need to address this, especially in convenience stores. All right. So we'll have it backed up for two weeks. Any other discussion, public safety?
Good job, chief.
No, I'm openly adjourned.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor? Aye.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
And city development planning is next. Can I suggest that we move item number five to the top of the agenda?
Yes, let's do that. And that does not have to be in executive session, I don't believe. Correct? So I'll call to order the committee on city development and planning, and we have the sale of vacant lots to the community builders for the Hillside View Phase 2 developments. And Mr. Gillen, you want to?
Gillen, I need you to come up.
I can't stand.
Okay.
I'm sorry. I, my knee out over the weekend. So I was just asking Carl for his chair. Yeah, I really, I can't stand. I'm sorry. This is not in great shape. I just want to thank the council and especially the mayor and the city staff, Rachel, for all their good work on selling real estate. I get excited every agenda when I look at it and see all the properties that are selling. Putting back in the roles. I think I'm pretty good at selling real estate. You guys blow me away every two weeks with all the activity level. And it's really a joy to work with Rachel on the property disposition. I congratulate you all for your successes. We have a good one tonight. You all know that the community builders is currently doing $20 million worth of construction up on Hamilton Hill. Redoing the old St. Columbus School, the former Horace Mann School. Bunch of infill development up there. It's the biggest private sector investment in the history of Hamilton Hill. Combined with the Joe Allen Apartments at $18 million, and the Ford Library Project, $3 million, and the Summit Towers Project at $10 million. It brings to $51 million, the amount of good work that is happening in the neighborhood with the cooperation, mayor, the leadership of the mayor, council. We're very excited about that. We're going, we're here tonight to move that ball forward still further, which is the sale of 29 lots and buildings to the community builders so that they can start planning and commencing, get, they're really underway already with their planning, but commence Phase 2 of the Hillside View Project, which is very, very exciting. We're asking for your approval to sell 17 lots for $17,000, so $1,000 apiece. We're asking for your approval to sell the 12 buildings that are vacant and very poor condition for a dollar each. This, these buildings are all slated for demo. And it saves the land bank, which we run, and the city over $800,000 in demo costs. So it's a really good investment that we have the community builders do that demo instead of us frankly don't have that kind of money of playing around for demo. Their plan is to build 94 units with some commercial space, with some retail space, and pending application for various tax credits that are integral to financing this project. It's about a $30 million investment in Hillside View Phase 2. One of the most exciting elements of the project, I talked to Councilman Reggie about this, and I'm personally so glad to see it. And Council Porterfield is, they are stepping forward to undertake the cleanup of the former Commando cleaners right there at that pivotal corner of Albany and Craig Street. They're going to aggressively attack that project and clean it up and really get rid of that eyesore that's been there for a very long time. And it is now at a pivotal corner because we have some good activity on Albany, and then we turn at Craig, and you turn at Craig, and that's where Commando's cleaners is that needs to be cleaned up. So we're very, very excited about this. The, the community builders, of course, have been around since 1964. We're really blessed to have them working in Schenectady. They own and manage 10,000 housing units in 14 states plus the District of Columbia. And I got to tell you, of all the developers I've worked with, Jenica is definitely one of the hardest working. She calls me and emails me at 4:00 or 5:00 o'clock in the morning, and then later that same night at midnight, and really is up there hands-on, you know? She's up there at the schools, what's going on at the former St. Columbus School with the creation of the Makerspace that's going to bring entrepreneurs and small business people, craftspeople into the neighborhood. It's really, really exciting. So Jenica's here, one of her associates, happy to answer. Janice, I'm sorry. And we're just thrilled to move this. And again, we're very blessed to be working with Rachel and all of you to proceed with Hillside View Phase 2. And happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
I have no questions because Jenica's come to the neighborhood association and, you know, explained it and actually just kind of kept us abreast of what was going on throughout the process. Just looking forward to be a really good project. I see what's going on now, looking forward to the Makerspace. And I understand you're getting ready to lease up some of the.
Oh, yeah, yeah. There's four of the households are available now for leasing or actively leasing. We had, today we had our lottery for a certain portion of the units that'll come online later on, spring. So we're very active marketing right now. We're getting a lot of positive responses, a lot of interest. And, yeah, the next building, 7:30 Stanley, will be completed by the mid-month, so in the next week and a half. So we're very excited. And this will, this, we, part of this, the Phase 2 will be able to demolish some of the lighting structures that are on Stanley Street that are actually a safety hazard currently in our current condition. They are properties that, but the rear of our properties on Stanley, they front Delmont Avenue. So we see this really as being key to just part of the success of lease-up and the stabilization of the first phase of it, so.
Yeah, Ms. Brazel.
Can you start?
Spring.
Property sales done, that site control is everything in economic development. First rule of economic development is you got to have site control with your cooperation. We get that next month, you know, Monday night, and get the properties in the hands of community builders. There are three or four properties that Metroplex is helping to acquire. And then it's a fairly long road. We have to do all the due diligence on the Brownfield Building, but.
We've done a lot of the due diligence already. And this, once the transfer happens, that we have a Brownfield application teed up to go into BEC, which will start the finance assembly for that, the group of buildings that surrounds the Commando property, so. Yeah.
And it truly shows our investment in our neighborhoods. We keep getting criticized for disinvesting in downtown all the time, but we're truly moving into all our neighborhoods right now. We've got the Mount Pleasant Crane neighborhood. We have the Eastern Avenue corridor going on in, of course, Hamilton Hill. So again, those myths that are out there that we're not doing anything in our neighborhoods are truly false. And we continue to make progress in the city of Schenectady. Thank you. It's all about partnerships, and that's what it's all about there. Some good leadership here that we have at the table, so thank you very, very much, and thank you for the work.
The city of Schenectady has been a tremendous, and Metroplex has been a tremendous partner for us, as well as other area nonprofits. We, you know, it's been an incredible team effort.
Working together, yeah.
In Hamilton Hill, yeah, with the Boys and Girls Club and the Albany Barn, which we, the City Barn, and all of the area youth organizations and Schenectady program. Incredible. It's been really an honor.
Thank you for being a part of our city, right?
Yeah.
And with us. So any other questions or concerns with this? Can I have a motion to move it? Let's do it quickly so they don't change your mind. Mr. Multerver, second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
They're all yours. Thank you.
Thanks, Rachel.
All righty, so I'll start with number one. Is that all right? We'll go up to the top with the sliding dirty. Chris, I think you're here for those, my friend. There's a couple of them here for you.
This revocable is a second revocable permit for sliding dirty. The first revocable, which was approved, was further signed. This revocable is for something a little bit different. It is for sliding dirty to operate a cafe area in the public right-of-way, which is a kind of a bowl out that you see. They have installed lights, bench, stanchions, rope, some papers. They like to use this area as, as their cafe. Reason that this is not just a cafe permit, which they have, is that it is not going to go back in the building at the end of the night, such as Zen. This is permanent installation in the area, so it's going to be staying. So I wanted to run this a separate permit, separate from the sign, so that, you know, if it was to be revoked, we could revoke it separately. So, and I put in the, I had them put in there that, you know, I'm calling these pertinences. You know, there could be more, we could have some less. You know, we're going to have to keep their insurance on file for it, like we do with everything else, but this is just a little bit different, because it's on the ground, it's not hanging like so.
And you're okay with the winter, Chris? With the winter, the snow and everything happening?
The city doesn't, you know, we don't maintain the sidewalks. He's doing DSIC. They're on board for that. I know that, you know, they really want to engage that corner. It's kind of, they've said it's kind of been a dead spot in the city, so to speak. They want to engage it with the lights to show people that there's something up the hill, you know, up from Brockers Theater.
Right, it is downtown.
Yeah, so that was the idea, to put something there, hence the lights, to try to draw people to it.
And they're not getting closed like Scotty's on Union Street, are they, from the wintertime? I mean, are they looking to use this in the winter as well?
No, they're looking to use it in the winter. No, I mean, you saw there's a picture of, they have a stanchion, just rope stanchions. It's just more of a permanent installation. They already have a bench that they put in there around the planter.
All right. Any questions or concerns? They did a good job over there. I need a motion? Ms. Porterfield, second. All in favor, say aye? All right, you have the brown bag, too.
This is our standard brown bag up on Hamilton for Union Street. So it's for, we've been awning the sign.
Any questions or concerns on this one? Need a motion? And second, Ms. Porterfield, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
How are we doing with the consultants on the Old Street Bridge? Is something coming for us soon?
Yeah, we're hoping to have it the next cycle. It's at DOT. We just sent out the packet of concurrence DOT. Once we have concurrence, DOT issues us the Schedule A, which is the funding. And once we have that, we bring it to council for approval, send the area and sign, and then we. So they're hoping. What's that? Yeah, that's what we're having, yeah. I just said we're trying to get it for the next one.
But you were trying for this cycle.
Yeah, we were trying for this one, but then we needed to get it into the DOT because I forgot to have all the concurrence, all the packages, so we'd get in there. So I was trying to skip ahead, and I got, I got called and said, no, you're trying to skip ahead.
They got you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right.
Are you talking about the paving yards, Chris?
Uh, Carl was going to talk. I'm going to sit right here.
Oh, very good. All right. Very good. Ms. Brazel?
Really, it was something that came up during one of our budget meetings. Mr. Wallen expressed some.
No, it was a discussion on street jobs.
Oh, yes, Mr. Palomini's agenda items, and you said.
Paving of yards.
More concerning is the paving, or equally concerning was the paving of the yards. So I think at that time, what we talked about was, is there something that the council can do to deter that? To, you know, increase penalties or whatever the case may be? So because we had, I had it as a note to bring it back, bringing it back for council discussion.
Yeah, that's what I talked with Carl a lot, as it's from a work in St. Council.
Yeah, we discussed this issue, looked at what we're doing right now. What I'd like to do is consider a little more, the big issue with this is about having proof that somebody can swear in a penalty of perjury about certain person doing the work. Because the homeowner hires somebody to come in, and they pay what they're supposed to. We don't usually want to go after the homeowner for that, we try to go after the companies. We have some success with that. But I'm going to sit down and review how we've been, how much success we've been having with these, see if there's some tweaks we could make to underlying legislation. And there's a recommendation I'll make to the mayor, bring it back. We need to do something to tweaks.
Okay. Because I think what we talked about, too, wasn't just, you know, a driveway that was a little wider than it was supposed to be. But it was like paving your entire front yard or paving your entire backyard, so there's no runoff and it's going to the neighbor's yard.
It's, we can go there, we can say, then, you know, we go to law, is, look, here's a picture on Google Earth today, and here's a picture, you know, yesterday, today, and they're not, they're not the same. But is that really something you can bring to court? And then this point comes, and I can't go and take a picture of everybody's yard today. Timestamp it, and then take a picture of everybody's yard in a year. So, you know, a lot of this is neighbors complaining, you know, they don't get permits, they just say you paved the yard. We go there, we have a violation, but when did they pave it? Who paved it? And all that information, that's what, you know, the effect of law is, actually having a procedure in place that builds a stronger case where we can be successful at actually implementing. But we have to do it. I mean, like I say, it's a much bigger problem than most things that we have.
Yeah, we saw it a couple times. I didn't realize until we were walking. It's like, oh, my goodness. And there, the entire backyard was blacked out. It's like, wow, never knew that.
So maybe we could have an update in like a month?
Yeah, after Thanksgiving.
Two weeks seems like a short amount of time, but maybe you touch base on what your discussions have been in a month or so?
After Thanksgiving. All right. Very good. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, the Schenectady's application for restore New York funding.
This is a, council already acted on this. Where it's calling for a public hearing. The public hearing is on next Monday night. You can put, do completion of the application.
All righty. And I believe the remaining items are going to be in executive session, so I need a motion to recess our committee? Or to adjourn it, correct? No, recess. Recession. Mr. Porterfield and Mr. Multerver, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All right, thank you.
Okay, I'm going to call finance to order, and we have a call for a public hearing for the upper union street budget. I thought we, that we didn't need, it's pretty straightforward budget. Yeah, yep, I saw it in the packet. So was there any questions? It's just really a call for public hearing at this point, what the budget is in your packet.
Do we have a comparison as far as what, you know, from last year to this year?
No, you can ask him.
We'd probably have a file, I could probably pull it.
I wouldn't.
But they, it will be available. If there's questions.
I just, to see in line.
Okay, before we, before we contact him, you'll see if you can pull it up from last year. Actually, if you go to the city code, you can probably pull it up about one of the packets. So a motion for the call for public hearing? Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Yep. And then also call for public hearing for the DSAB budget. A fraction of the VSIC. All right, and we'll get a presentation, as we do every year.
And again, can we just have comparisons on that one as well, Ms. Brazel?
Yeah, I think they usually.
They usually do, yes, they usually do, but Union did not, right.
But, yeah, Upper Union is so simplistic that they don't usually.
Right.
So I could have a motion? Moved by Mr. Multerver, second by Ms. Lutzunis, all in favor?
Aye.
Is there anything else to come before finance?
Make a motion.
Moved by Ms. Lutzunis, second by Mr. Multerver, all in favor? Aye, we adjourned. And then I will call the government operations committee to order. Did you actually have a question on this?
No, no.
It was supposed to come off. What we had talked about was just for Mr. Thorne to send it out to everybody, that if anybody had a need to discuss it, we'd put it on the agenda. So I'll just recommend, recommend that this is be taken on.
And I appreciate that being emailed to us. There's some good information in there. The city saved, I believe, it's over $181,000 yearly for just the updates on a lot of the stuff. So there's some good, good reporting in there, and we did what they said they would do. We did some savings, and overall, it was a good, it was a good contract, so.
If you look, I mean, if you want to look quick, if the fifth-year report.
That's what I looked at.
Has an overview of the whole five years.
Yep, showed all the projects that we did, all the completed, what the savings were on each line, so they extended it out. So thank you for pulling that up for us, and it was good information. Thank you.
Anything else to come before government operations? Motion to order, moved by Ms. Lutzunis, second by Mr. Palomini, all in favor? Aye, we adjourned.
All right, so I need a motion to city development planning. We need a motion to go on executive session?
We got a call.
I'll call it back in order first of all. We're back in session. And then we need a motion to go on executive session.
Second.
Second, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody.